All right, we do have one o'clock here. I'll call the meeting to order. Can everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up is to approve the agenda. I have a motion to approve our agenda. Okay, thanks. Do we have a second?
One second.
Perfect. Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Next is the public hearing on the proposed property tax levy for FY 24-25. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So.
Okay, do we have a second? Andrew. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Public hearing is open.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for coming today. This is our public hearing for a proposed property tax levy for fiscal year starting July 1st, 2024 till June 30th, 2025. The County Board of Supervisors will make, will conduct a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year county as, tax asking as follows. Meeting date, 3/26/24. Meeting time, 1 o'clock PM. Meeting location, Cassouche County Courthouse Board of Supervisors Meeting Room, 114 West State Street, Algonah, Iowa 50511. At the public hearing, any resident or taxpayer may present objections to or arguments in favor of the proposed tax levy. After the hearing of the proposed tax levy, the board will publish notice and hold a hearing on the proposed county budget. The budget is available on our website at https://cassouchecounteyiowa.gov. So I'm gonna start. It is up on your screen. And if you'll notice that this may look a little bit different than it has in previous fiscal years. There was House File 718 that changed our proposed property tax. There's no longer a maximum tax levy as there used to be in the past. And House File 718 did make some changes that we'll talk about in a little bit. You also probably received a notice in the mail. All of you taxpayers should have, and we'll kind of go over that a little bit in part of this presentation as well. So we'll start with our taxable valuations for general services for fiscal year 23-24, which is the fiscal year that we're currently in. Our certified property tax is $1,602,720,910. The budget year effective tax, which effective tax rate is the rate that would be asked if the same dollar amount as they asked in this current fiscal year that we're in. So that amount would be $1,641,652,866. The budget year proposed tax for fiscal year 24-25, The requested tax dollars, the countywide rate, is for current year fiscal year 23-24, Fiscal year 24-25, $8,943,183. And for proposed tax year 24-25, That brings the countywide tax rate from 5.58 in 23-24, which would be the same in 24-25. I'm sorry, 5.44767 in 24-25 and proposed 24-25 at 6.5. The taxable valuations for rural services is $1,210,019,928 for fiscal year 23-24, $1,256,553,818 for 24-25, and $121,256,553,818 for fiscal year 24-25 as the proposed tax. The requested tax dollars for additional rural levies, $1,911,831 for fiscal year 23-24. For fiscal year 24-25 effective tax, $1,911,831. And proposed tax 24-25, $1,946,427. The tax rate rural additional, 1.58 for 23-24, 1.52149 effective 24-25, and proposed tax for 24-25, 1.54902, which brings the rural total for 23-24 to 7.16. Effective 24-25, 6.96916. And proposed 24-25, 8.04902. The next part is gonna be the tax rate comparison, current versus proposed. Now, this part that's up there, which is on the kind of the middle of your screen, isn't talking about your residential property. It's talking about a property with a valuation of $100,000. So to kind of explain this, I'm gonna kind of show you the math a little bit of how they came up with this. Okay. So if we had an urban property in fiscal year 24 that had a property value of $100,000, we multiplied that times the residential rollback and we come up with $54,650.10. If you divide that by 1,000, you'll come up with your tax levy rate of 5.58, which is rounded out to $305. If you compare that same property of that same value of $100,000 for fiscal year 25, the rollback is 46.34, which brings you to $46,342.80 divided by 1,000 and times the tax levy rate that's proposed of $6.50, it brings you to $301. So if you divide the $301 by the $305, it gives you a negative rate. That doesn't mean you're paying less property taxes. What that means is if you compare those two years with the same value, that is what your property taxes would do. But of course, we all know that property values change. And of course, our rollback has dropped. So that is gonna look like it's a negative amount. But that is not how it will affect your property taxes. That is, that change was mandated by House File 718. So we have to send out mailings letting you know what that change would be from year to year at the same value. So, yeah.
Can you give us an example then of what you would have expected that $100,000 property to now be evaluated at? And what our net tax is gonna be?
Well, that's what this does. It tells you what it would be 24, what it is 25.
Well, that says it's going down. And you said it's not going down because the valuation is going up. So the valuation is now more than $100,000. How much will...
Okay, but there's a rollback. So the rollback is showing you it would be negative because of the rollback.
So then, but you're saying tax is going up, right?
Right.
Okay, so can we get something that shows in essence on a $100,000 valuation for this past year of what the tax was and what it'll be this next year?
Yep, and that will come out when we do taxes this spring. Then that'll all come out in the tax statements this spring.
Oh, we can't see that now? Can we get some kind of idea?
Well, that's, that's part, I can send you, I can give you a site if you're interested, to the Department of Management site. And you can go in and plug in all the numbers on your own residential property and it will pull up what that amount would be.
Roger, you have some.
Properties vary, vary on their assessed values. So we can't really give you a determination on what yours is because every property in the county is assessed differently to a certain extent. A $100,000 house in Algonah will be different than a $100,000 house in Titanca. Does that make sense?
So that example is the same for residential property and commercial property. The reasons for an increase, for an increase that proposed exceeds the current is increases in the budget are due to reduction in revenues received from the state, undated state mandates, increase in health insurance and property insurance costs, and general inflation. And then that brings us to our comment section, public comment. I do, I did send you guys an email of one that we received and I printed it off for you. Would you like me to read that?
Yeah, if you could read it, that'd be great.
So this is from...
Do you have a public comment?
Yeah, I was wondering why, why, why is the money from the state less?
That's...
Even better question. To say that, what exactly are the reductions? Because my understanding is there's no reduction. It's actually a 2% increase. And the governor did this to give relief to property tax where instead you guys are raising evaluations and now raising the levy. Can you explain what exactly are the reductions that they're talking about?
So there's...
Should we read the letter first?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's read the letter, then we'll circle back to that. That works. Sure.
Yeah, we can turn the lights on.
Let's do that.
Because that way the letter gets read and then we can discuss. Uh, we need to go.
Okay, so this letter is an email received March 25th from Reverend Stephen Schlay and to Cassouche County Board of Supervisors regarding the proposed tax rate increase in property taxes. Dear sirs, as you know, there is an increasing trend in agriculture toward the elimination of small family farms while moving toward corporate ownership of agricultural lands. Wealthy corporations and foreign entities know the value of farmland and more and more the little guy is being squeezed out of existence. Part of this squeeze is the growing increase of property taxes. Last year, my property taxes took a sizable jump from the previous year and I assume the same will be true for this year. I have two small farms, one in Buffalo Township and one in Fenton Township. These were the farms of my maternal and paternal grandparents and then of my parents through purchase. At one time, not that long ago and within my lifetime, these small farms each could support a single family, but not anymore. The property in Buffalo Township is being taxed in part because of the foolish decision, decision of the area people trying to save their local school in Titanca by doing an expensive renovation of their school building, a building which, as I understand now, seems empty. This decision ended in failure but continues to place a burden on the farm owners trying to pay off this albatross. Not only are my property taxes increasing exponentially, but a drainage ditch runs through my farm in the Fenton Township. In 2022, because of the 50-year overhaul of that drainage ditch widening and deepening it, my tax burden jumped approximately 150% over and above my regular property taxes, which also increased. To add insult to injury, because of torrential rains that took place before the receding had taken root on the now barren embankment, huge areas of the embankment along this ditch were washed away. This will require massive repairs and of course additional expense over and above my property taxes. We live at a time when our federal government is rapidly inflating our currency to fund massive deficits through the creation of money by the Federal Reserve system. This is hitting all Americans with inflation, which is a result of more money chasing fewer goods. This hidden tax hits the poor and middle class the hardest. I would ask that you keep these matters in mind as you are considering raising property taxes for '24 and '25. This is not a game that is being played. Real Americans are being hurt by the steady erosion of our ability to put food on the table. Respectfully submitted, Reverend Steve Schla. Not sure if I can say that.
Okay, thank you for reading that.
Get back to the question.
Yeah, so... I don't know if, I don't know if we, if anyone has a list of the state mandates, but I believe there's about 1,300 state mandates that are unfunded. The list is steadily grown. One in particular that I've talked about in this boardroom, it affects other counties more than it does here. But juvenile detention is a board I serve on. In the state code, they are obligated to, it was supposed to be a joint venture between the counties and the state. So in the code, it says a minimum of 10% funded by the state, but up to 50%. And during COVID, where all of our expenses went through the roof, their funding was below the 10% threshold that they're even required to fund. So we could be here till this time next year talking about examples, but there are a lot of unfunded state mandates.
Well, get specific. Tell us a couple.
That was one right there.
What's the expense of that?
It varies by the county depending on our usage for juvenile detention. So...
What's the added expense over budget year to budget year?
Well, what, what comes from the form of the state reimbursement, the rest of the tab for the cost of detention is picked up by the counties. So to actually get to a dollar figure would be very complicated. I don't, I don't have a dollar figure for you on that one. That's just one example for a board that I serve on.
I think a couple maybe better examples for our county would be like Back the Blue is certainly, while we all certainly do support the mentality behind Back the Blue and our officers need to be paid accordingly, it, it is an unfunded state mandate. And we have gone from spending $260,000 or so, I believe, in officer salaries in, from four years ago to around $800,000 now. And so that is a, you know, massive increase just in that department. Not that I am opposed to that, but that's just something to consider. And, and just in general, I mean, our, our, you can't blacktop a road for the costs that you could even two years ago or four years ago. And so the budgets have to get bigger and your project area gets smaller. And, and so then you start, where do you cut services there? And, and to people, and how do you keep up with the increased demand? Roads wear out, equipment wears out, everything does. But at some point, that, that's where we're at, is how do you, how do you not purchase equipment that needs to be purchased? How do you not blacktop a road or replace a bridge that needs to be replaced? It's just the money.
Well, so I answer that is I'm a farmer. And you, I don't know, you probably don't know because you're not a farmer, but our wages are substantially lower this year. How do I replace the combine that needs to be reconned or replaced? I don't.
I understand that. I, I just, I'm saying as far as, that's where, that's what we're questioning.
There's four conservative Republicans up there and I've seen nothing conservative. I watch the videos and I've seen nothing conservative out of three of you. Nothing. You say yes to everything. Even to the point of we're not going to raise wages for the employees. And yet I read in the paper the very next week that the starting wage is higher. You did raise wages, even though you said you didn't.
We're doing, we're doing zero, we're doing 0% wages across the board for everyone.
Except for the secondary road department because they were in a union contract. Well, that was not something in our control.
So that was about $540,000 for Back the Blue. So we just got taxed for the EMS service. There was $600,000 going to EMS service that you were paying when the city owned it. I never saw any relief coming back to me on that $600,000. I realize it's not a line item thing anymore. But that $600,000 just went into something else, if I'm not mistaken. And there's your Back the Blue right there. Where did that $600,000 go that you were paying that you no longer have to pay? Because now you're taxing for EMS.
So I wasn't on the board when that was done.
So when, and Roger could probably speak to this too, but when, when those community meetings were being held, there was a comparison between what was currently being allocated towards EMS and what would be with that new property tax. So the difference, what was, what was talked about, it's still an overall increase. But, so you're not going to see relief on the one side when it goes to the other. But it didn't... You, you just wouldn't have been able to see that, I guess, if that makes sense.
It does, but it was reported to us and it was on the news that this tax was going to cover the expense of EMS. And, and I remember hearing that. And now that, that either is or isn't happening. And it should be $600,000 you were paying somewhere to the EMS. It should be somewhere. And it looks like you ran that through another budget of some part. And I don't know where that went.
We just added it to expenses in general basic.
Exactly.
Yeah, we did. That's what happened.
So there's $600,000. You raised the valuation. It looks to me like it's a 19% increase because you raised the valuation and now you're raising the levy. You know, I can't put my hand out and grab money anywhere else. I think you guys need to make some hard decisions here on this budget. Instead of coming after us all the time. Again, I was thinking you were conservative Republicans and you stood on my steps and said you were. But I've seen nothing conservative. And getting back, you did, never did answer that question about the reductions in revenues for the state. I don't believe it was a reduction. I believe it was a 2% increase. You just weren't getting as much as you thought you were getting. And again, that was designed for property tax relief and you're doing an end run around it.
Are you talking about the funding for schools?
No, no.
What, where's 2% increase?
It says... Reduction? First thing.
Yeah, but...
Due to reduction in revenue received from the state. I don't think you did get a reduction in revenue received from the state. I believe it's a 2% increase is what I can find. I don't think that's a reduction when you get 2% increases. You just thought you were gonna get more. Am I wrong?
So there's, there was backfills for the military and 65 and over credits and stuff that the state had. We're not getting those anymore. That is a direct reduction in revenue from the state.
How much is that about?
It's a deduction because of
Because like credit.
Implication of a rollback. It had nothing to do with getting money from the state is what he's trying to do. So we collect less taxes from you because the state mandates that we follow rules. We never got money from the state that said gas tax.
Why didn't we get that money? Why didn't we get that money?
Which money?
The gas tax that you just said. Was something reduced in rural services or something with secondary roads?
We didn't need the metrics because of the reduction in rural services taxation. So then we had to do some adjustments with lost money to make sure that we didn't lose our gas tax money from the state.
Goof up of last year when you voted on it. Because of a goof up, not voting for the right stuff last year on the budget.
Well, the budget last year affects the budget bigger. So any reduction from last year affects us.
And I'm, we're looking at this thing and this proposed tax off of F for next year is a 20% increase. Even on my farm, I haven't had a 20% increase on stuff. I know stuff, I have the door to the store. We don't have a 20% increase. So why is your proposed budget going up by 20%? Your tax asking. A $1.7 million increase from last year. Somebody is not watching this thing very close.
Can I ask a question? So like last year, when I just kind of pulled up a budget of last year, it looked like the fund balances were in good shape. I mean, so that, that's why I was kind of surprised at the increase in taxes because we had an increase in valuation, which therefore kind of helps with our tax levies. And that they look like they were gonna be fine. The bottom line, it was the ending fund balance for June 30th of this year, which I know that it's a crystal ball, but the crystal ball is taking into consideration all revenue and all expenses for that year. Well, we don't usually always spend all the expenses. I mean, typically we don't because you know, sometimes you just don't know what's gonna happen. But if more expenses took place, there would have been a budget amendment for that. Was there a budget amendment for a large amount of expenses? Or I guess I was just trying to put it together by looking at last year's budget and I couldn't figure out where the problem was.
Yeah.
I think the biggest problem that I seen with secondary roads in that budget was we canceled all the trucks because of COVID. The year that came out because they put a big increase in all the equipment. And the next year we bought them, they were $50,000 more and that went back to that budget. And we were short $50,000 for a lot of the trucks. The bridges went from $300,000 to $500,000. So by the time to get done, maintainers went up $70,000. Fuel went up about a buck and a quarter from what we had budgeted for years.
Well, was there a budget amendment though?
No, because it stayed within the road department's budget.
There was a budget.
There was two budget.
There was six, six trucks purchased.
There's two budgets.
And there, I mean, I think Doug's...
It stayed within the reserve in the budget. But normally we rolled more money over.
Yeah.
That's where the road department comes in.
And I think Doug said recently that blacktopping was up over 30%.
It's over 30%. The general basic, really, I, I go back through it and I think it's weight use insurance. IT went up drastically. Supervisors budget went up drastically.
Right, but all that would have been taken into consideration last year when you were budget planning, right? Or am I misunderstanding what you're saying?
Some of it was, some of it wasn't. But we had the money in the reserve, so we didn't have to do a budget amendment on it.
Yeah, but if you didn't budget for an expense and if a department went over, you would have had shit.
Right, but there was enough in it.
So, so in the last couple of years, you rolled through all that money and now you need more. And where's this gonna end?
It isn't.
Until you break us. Until you break us.
We're gonna have to test this decision.
You're gonna have to make some hard decisions, guys, and you're not willing to make them.
What are the projected ending fund balances now that we're getting closer? What are the projected ending since that probably changed? Because if you need more tax, that had to have changed. So what, what have they gone down to? Compared to the budget from last year, that's your period.
You got those figures.
Is that in, is that in our folder?
That's in the folder.
So the, the big thing we looked at was the making sure we had at least 25% in the ending fund balances to carry over from when the fiscal year ends to taxes. So that's, we, we aimed for those metrics as targets. Yep.
Right, right. And, and they looked healthy.
And...
I'm saying they looked healthy at what you approved last year. They were healthy fund balances. I'm not saying they weren't. I'm saying they were healthy.
So some of, some of the fund balances from last year, which would confuse those numbers a little bit, were ARPA funding and ARPA projects that were still in the works and money that was being spent for that, which was one-time funds. And that distorted the picture of our fund balances a little bit.
Okay, why, why is that though? I don't understand. Because I, I really don't understand the ARPA part.
So that was...
When did we get that money, ARPA money?
It came in two major tranches or payments. It was tied in with, I don't remember. It was the American Rescue Plan Act is the initials. But the ARPA Funding Incorporated funds that went to the state level, went to counties and cities and tribal governments all across the country. Funds that went to the state level, went to counties and cities and tribal governments all across the country. And it went direct to those jurisdictions to support things during the pandemic, so. We had cert- we had guidelines that had to be followed on what was eligible for those expenses. And where that money could be directed, but, and timelines on when to spend it as well. But when those funds were in our accounts, they weren't. They weren't separated from our other fund balance or normal fund balance, so.
One, so where'd it go?
General, general basic, so when, when those funds were sitting there waiting to be spent for projects, it. Distorted the picture a little bit of where we were actually sitting, um, so. Last year when we.
Are those federal, those federal dollars? Why wouldn't they have been put in their own fund? Um, so that you could account for that, cause you're gonna have to account for every penny of that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
How will you account for it if it was just put in the general fund? And not been kept separate?
It's got a separate project code.
So is this guy right when he says twenty percent increase?
Yeah, nineteen point three.
Okay. Wow.
Yeah, wow.
I pay six hundred and thirteen dollars a month out there in G-Force property taxes, I've got my own well, I've got my own sewer, what am I getting for it? Somebody tell me. I, I just see, and I'm not pointing fingers at you people, I just see a lot of bad decisions being made in this area. You got a multimillion dollar armory that's giving away for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that should have been a public option. You stop raising your hand, you're out, nobody can complain about it. You got a building bought over here for voting machines, I mean, it's just like, wow. And then, did anybody inspect it? No, the roof was bad in it, so then you spent more money. And then you buy the UBC building, then you buy motor inn, and I'm saying this is as a whole, I'm not pointing fingers at you, but it's like, good grief. And then, oh, we need more money. God, just.
Motor inn was bought by the city, that was city built, going over the.
I realize that. But that could have been used for the voting machines. That could have been tied together somehow, that was a hell of a building. You couldn't even pay for the parking lot for what that was sold for. You know, and I know it's all not, it's intertwined though, cause it's still all about decisions. I don't know, I just, if we ran the business like that, they wouldn't last very long.
Some, some here. What you should be talking to is your state legislators, when they rolled back all the commercial property tax evaluations by. Sixty percent and then thirty percent. I can take a windmill that's set in south town here that we should have six thousand dollars coming in in revenue every year. And we're getting less than two thousand.
Who, who didn't see that coming? Roger.
I know, but that.
Who didn't see that coming?
We're, we're very ready for the thirty percent rollback on commercial property, we weren't. Cause I just took all your taxes and added it to like ag land and houses. We had no control over that.
There's also an issue with the, you know, getting new sheriff's vehicles, new vehicles for secondary roads and stuff. Due to, you know, the pandemic, things weren't getting built, so, you know, when that money was budgeted for those items and then. Not being able to be spent during that, that time period, it rolled over and again, that made our fund balance look healthy. But then once all that stuff starts coming in, we're having to pay for it all, that's, you know. Where all of that was going was, you know, trucks and things that were, that had been purchased.
In that particular fund, the secondary road fund.
Right.
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 Quite a bit of that comes from gas tax money, we can't blame all that on property taxes.
Right.
Forty-sixty percent of the revenue comes from gas tax money.
Roger, correct me if I'm wrong, we had trucks on order for quite a while.
Correct.
Didn't we?
And we never.
Once.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
When that, when that stuff.
More for the same car.
Yeah, and when that stuff carries across fiscal years, um, your, your fund balances get. Artificially distorted for that aspect because all these things are planned and ordered and. It's, it's not actually going out the door on regular rotation like it previously would have. Or would have outside of those circumstances.
But did you have revenue you thought you were going to get that you did not?
No.
I don't know any major pieces that way, no.
So nothing was budgeted for revenue wise that were, that didn't end up receiving?
Don't think.
Last year or this, or this coming year that you're working on?
Don't think any major pieces, I don't think so, you know.
That would seem like. Recruiting, then if you didn't, you kind of knew what was coming in and yet you deflated this. Any, any extra you had in this county. That doesn't seem very prudent on you guys, pardon? It's pretty disappointing to sit here and watch you guys nod your head, and I know the minute we leave, you're gonna continue with this mission. Nothing has changed, I don't know how to get through to you guys that. You know, I'm just saying with COVID money, you're used to doing this and the COVID money comes. Where am I supposed to do that as a farmer? I can't do that, so now you're doing it to me, I don't have anywhere I can do that to. You're gonna have to make some hard decisions, guys, and again, don't sit on my doorstep and tell me you're a conservative Republican. You know who I'm talking to. And yet I, I watch these videos and I see nothing conservative coming out of you guys, nothing. Until now, all of a sudden, you're in trouble. Huh, wonder how that happened, it's very disappointing to see.
I don't understand at all, Tom either, and how. How even with the, well, let's take the trucks for example, you got ten million dollars sitting in a secondary road fund. And the trucks are on order and then you spend it down, but that was planned, that was known, you, and. Why, why the county going into it? Did, did not realize, I mean, how, how we're not. I don't know how to word that, but it was planned, I mean, that was, that was, we should have known that was coming down the pipe. And granted, we went through the whole budget process this year. With, you know, not knowing some numbers that we. That our budgets were, our fund balances were not gonna end as well as they were. And so then at the end of the process, make decisions to. Basically cut as much as we could out of the budget without cutting major services this year is what, what it ended up being. Um, and why that was, I don't know, and I'm not gonna say that, well, I've only been here a year, I, you know, I don't know what's going on. Cause I do know what's going on at least the last budget cycle, but, um. But that, I, I've, I understand where you're coming from and it is frustrating for me too, and I, we are gonna look at cutting. Seeing where we can cut in the coming year, we're gonna have to.
Prior to this, or is this gonna come in and then you're gonna cut, because it's too late, guys.
I, I mean, you get like fund balances every month, I mean, what, so why was it a surprise?
It was a surprise that where our fund balance was going to end in a year from now. Not necessarily the, today.
Yeah, projected. So we gotta do something, we're getting eighteen percent inflation tax right now and then we're throwing another nineteen percent. On our taxes again, we can't afford it.
Yeah, where are you supposed to come up with the money?
Yeah. We just keep pulling out of the people and they don't have it.
You guys gotta make some bad, bad, hard decisions, seriously, and you gotta do it now, now is the time. I'm doing it in my business.
Yeah, we gotta make the same decisions on a farm and it's not gonna be a pretty couple of years.
Nope. You know, we have talked about cutting services for, you know, roads and bridges and things like that. The only problem with that is if you start cutting those services, you know, not paving roads, not grading roads as often, it gets worse. And then, then you have to spend that much more to get it back up, you know, if.
How are the workers out here putting in forty hour weeks?
No, that's been discussed.
How are they not putting in forty hour weeks if you're paying them forty hour weeks worth of money? There's a service right there, if they work their forty hours, you could maybe potentially cut some personnel. They're getting paid for a forty hour week, they should be working forty hours, there's where you start cutting, right there, number one, I can, I can tell you. You down one point seven?
That's a decades ago decision, unfortunately.
So.
It, it can still, it can still be addressed and, and we have to talk about it.
You, you are the supervisor, you can make that decision today. It looks to me like you guys aren't willing to make those decisions, it looks like your decision is made and it's just to keep hammering us. And the time is now to stop it. And you can nod your head, do it.
You're, you're right.
I'm very disappointed in this board that is here today, very disappointed. You know, Jack's the Democrat, he's supposed to be the liberal one, I got the four conservatives up here. Come on, guys. So my question to you is, what are you going to be moving forward? What is tomorrow going to bring? Now show your shoulders, I'd like to know, I really would like to know, cause you guys haven't got a plan. Except to hammer us.
Is there hope for that to go down next year, that tax levy? I mean, is there any hope for that? Or will it have to go up again? And what is the new levies? You, you have, if, are they broken down? Can you break them down by?
By the servicing.
The fund or whatever, like general basic fund, general supplement.
Um, supple- general supplemental is the one that's going up substantially in, in these numbers, um.
Do you want to know the amount?
Yeah, I'm just curious. Is a general basic still three point five?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yep, correct. And our, our rural basic is actually a lower levy rate. It's a total increase of like thirty thousand dollars.
Which one?
Rural basic.
Oh, okay.
And that's, that's limited by the House File seven eighteen.
So general supplemental is going up, why?
It's going to be two point two five.
From?
One point three three.
Okay.
And a lot of that is insurance, I mean, healthcare, health insurance, property insurance was up thirty percent. Um, and.
That's what got moved in.
Health insurance, yep, um, health insurance costs have, have risen over the last several years, I think we all know that.
But didn't you raise, so, so currently, and I love this stuff, cause I, I, I looked into this. You raised the stop loss from thirty-five thousand to seventy thousand, correct?
That will be things that will affect.
Going forward.
Yes.
And then you raised the out of pocket for, didn't that offset anything? So, so.
If we, if we hadn't done that with the numbers they gave us, it would have been over a million dollars more. I don't, I got all the paperwork here, I could show you that, but the changes we made were out of necessity.
Well, this out of pocket then, do you expect that to be a positive for this company? Because the company picks up the share, right? Will that be a positive number in the event, overall?
The employee will have to pay more for healthcare.
Yep, the employee would pick that up, yep. Um, so yeah, it's, that would, that would eat.
The stop loss, I don't see that being a benefit.
I don't either, I, I, I think that was a ridiculous move, that, that's gonna cost the county more, right?
Do you, have you seen any of the paperwork we got from Walmart, cause?
Well, I got the same thing, I paid thirty-one thousand dollars a year for my health insurance. So I don't need to see yours. I know what it is, I, I know it went up.
True.
I talked to Jack, I talked to Jack and asked him about it, just where I got my information.
We have to make cuts somewhere to make it work.
I'm getting handed from all sides, I don't need my county.
So we're going expenses. Premium, is what you're talking about, huh? That was about nine hundred thousand.
We're saving on the total, um.
But you're gonna pay it out anyway.
It's, it's over a million.
I think it's a wash too, I think that was a.
Large place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's no secret to insurance, no, they got it figured out.
So based on, and, and these are, I don't have the comparisons here written out. But if you come, let me go back here. If you compare our current plan, what renewal rates would have been for the total annual cost. It was just shy of four and a half million dollars. With the plan that we went to, it's actually a little different than the deductibles and stuff here. But we are looking at, I think this is close to the total of three point two. Um, so it's not quite a million and a half dollar difference, but it's well over a million dollar difference. And that incorporates the difference from thirty-five to seventy-five that we would pay in more claims. That is their projections, obviously, it's, it's estimates based on numbers and their actuaries put all that together. But with their projections, that change will save the total over a million dollars, so.
In this county?
In this county, yes.
I disagree with you because you're gonna get claims that make up most of that.
That's what I think.
Only claims were there last year.
Yeah, did you guys know that number?
Yep.
That were over seventy-five thousand?
There was three that were over seventy-five, and that's, that's in the other folder here. Yeah, so. So there, there were three that were substantially over seventy-five, there were another three that were close to seventy-five, there were. There were three that were less than ten thousand dollars over seventy-five, so those are close. The other, the other three were six figures plus, um. So, but we, yeah, we have a report for everything over ten thousand dollars, that's, it's all right here. Um, but what their numbers incorporate for those summaries and those comparisons. And the stop loss in particular, that discussion, their total annual cost, um. At the bottom, it does have, um, suggest, like their estimated suggested rates includes expected claims. Plus their fees, so the part we're substantially saving on is the stop loss, which with. With this thirty-five thousand dollar stop loss, we're at almost eleven hundred dollars a month, just for the stop loss. With seventy-five thousand dollar stop loss, we go to five twenty-four. So that more than cuts it in half.
Contract.
Per contract, um, so that is a huge difference, um. They do have, um. Their, the expected claims are incorporated into that figure for their total annual cost. But the stop loss was a fixed fee that was a huge portion of that bill. And, and they, I mean, they said multiple times, their standard book of business for groups of our size is seventy-five thousand. So, we were, we were holding on to a thirty-five thousand dollar stop loss. Much longer than the average in their groups. But yeah, I mean, I've got all sorts of paperwork here if you'd like to look at it.
Raising the stop loss would be more economical if you had a higher deductible plan than what we have. Cause we got five pages of people over ten thousand dollars on claims.
And we talked about, you know, changing our insurance to where the employees would be contributing. You know, monthly as well, um, the problem with that is, is, you know. You start having the employees contribute.
Um, the problem with that is, is, you know, you start having the employees contribute and you're going to have to increase their wages to kind of counteract that and there you're kind of a wash anyways. You know, because you will have to do wage increase to to make up for that difference that they're now having to pay.
See, this is where I now get to listen, because I, here I am a farmer and mine rate, mine went up from twenty eight thousand to thirty one thousand this year. I forgot to wage, raise my wages. This is not, this is where the conservative Republican part is not holding true, guys. Times are tougher.
They are.
I don't think you understand what that means. I think you all nod your heads, but I don't think you're willing to make those choices yet.
I I don't think you saw a lot of the conversations that happened in those
I watched these videos. I watched them.
The, the videos published by the county do not include budget workshop discussions. So the discussions about health insurance, yes, that was in our regular meetings. But there was a lot of conversation in budget workshops that were not posted.
Well, it looks like they ended the conversations. I'm disappointed. I'm extremely disappointed. You can't expect us to sit here and take a nineteen point three percent hit in our taxes again with, you know. And you're one part of our taxes.
Yeah.
We've been getting hammered by it every direction.
Good to see your school taxes went up from fifty seven point three four of your total taxes to sixty three point three one last year.
Yeah.
They went up six percent.
That's another place that doesn't understand it.
They're worse than we are.
They are. They definitely are.
As far as insurance, I'm, I'm not gonna be here much longer, but you're, the county's gonna have to go to high deductible insurance, either that or make the employees pay part of it. And really, high deductible is making the employees pay part of it.
Right, right.
It is.
I mean, you don't have to increase wages, you can increase the deductibles.
And high deductible is also going to slow frivolous after visits, things like that.
No.
Then I'm gonna say that we have people that could get insurance elsewhere through late
Yes.
that are not doing, taking advantage of it.
Yours is a better policy, so really.
Yeah.
It's not your job to please all the people, guys. It's your job to run this company efficiently. And this is not a well-oiled machine. There are hard places you can look at and cut and make tough decisions and you need to start doing it today, today. I'm doing my operation. I know for a fact everyone in here is doing it when the times get tough. And you are, so far, not showing to do that.
And I just want to clarify one thing. So general supplemental went up because of things that had to be taken out of general basic and put in general supplemental? But general supple, but general basic levies stayed the same?
We moved things from general basic into rural and removed health insurance from rural into supplemental.
Yeah.
Right. And that is not something that it, in in answer to the question, your question earlier, is, is there any hope for these levies to go down? This, how things are set up this year, as far as what is proportion to different levies, that is not how things are going to continue going forward. That that is not, uh well, obviously, it's not an ideal situation, but it's, it's, uh, that is gonna change.
That's not our intent long term.
Right.
So do you have a comparison of what the projected fund balances were going to be compared to when you raised it, what they're going to be now?
Yes.
Uh.
Well, I don't know if there's a comparison, but there's a, in, in general basic, we were
Close to, two, close to two million for ending fund balance.
Right.
And and we have like just shy of eight million coming out of there in expenditure, so that's basically right at the twenty five percent target.
So, yeah.
Is the budget presentation on the website yet? Or not yet?
We haven't got the hospitals levy created, haven't we?
Yeah.
So we don't really know what the total taxes in the video.
Yes, we do.
Spend more than that.
Yeah, we do. And the hospital's not part of our factors.
But they have their own sets of schedule.
They do, but that's not our presentation. They have their
That's part of taxes, so.
Mm-hmm.
So these people are gonna pay it, so in the end. Since last year, the hospital is five point two, three percent of the budget. Fifty is a big number.
That was my contention with the ambulance service, not to take time, but every other place charges to, if you have a truck to write down, John, your charge, you just come get it. I never did understand why the hospital wasn't running the ambulance service.
Un- unfortunately for, for that specific, I mean, it's, it's no different than, it's no different.
I understand. It's just a matter of right, sorry.
I I get that, but just briefly, it's, it's no different than the hospital with patients they have that are Medicare and Medicaid. The reimbursement for those two programs is substantially below the cost of providing the service.
I know.
And they are in the process of reviewing rates for Medicare and I think Medicaid as well, but, um.
The funny thing is West Hancock has an ambulance service that services Wesley. They're an independent service. Somehow they're making it without company assistance, basically, without a tax from the county. Um, so you can think about that. We've had EMS service, this is why I'm hardwitted, we've had EMS service taxation. We've had Iowa State University taxation. Now this levy and, you know, the increase in values. There's a lot of taxation without representation, especially in the Western area, because we don't even utilize the ambulance service in Algonquin. We use West Hancock. And as far as I'm concerned, that Iowa State University building is an antique. It shut the doors and nobody uses it anyway except for FFA and, uh, um, pesticide application.
You need an extension council.
What is that?
That's your Iowa State building, you're telling.
Yeah, yes.
Extension council is a big tax, that's doing such a name.
Then might as well close those doors. Brings nothing to the table for me and very few people, quite honestly, a select few. And and when we do go get our pesticide application license, they just raised the price from one twenty dollars, the, anyway, after the tax, so this, this, this reason taxes is not gonna cure your problems, guys.
I have one last question.
Go ahead.
So if the ARPA money was put in the general fund, is the ARPA money one hundred percent spent? Or is there any left that needs to be allocated? And if so, is that gonna cause future problems? If it was in the general fund?
I believe
How much did we get? And how much has been spent if that was put in the general fund?
Was it ten thousand?
There's, there's very little left of ARPA.
Like very little, few hundred thousand, very little thousand?
Less than, less than ten thousand.
Because we got like over two million, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's
What year did you get, get the money?
We got it in, in two separate, yeah.
Twenty and twenty?
Twenty twenty one and twenty two, I think.
Twenty one and twenty two, we got the money. It was appropriated in twenty.
In twenty, it was when it was started, yeah.
They didn't come into our check account until twenty one, as I remember.
Okay, I'm just catching on to this. Did I, so, so it got put into general? You spent it? And you thought you had it again? Is that my misunderstanding that it not, it didn't be taken off the budget or what happened? You spent it twice? Or then you spent it, you had it, you didn't have it, so you made that reference.
No.
So I'm not again, what, what am I missing there?
Yeah, you said something about the ARPA money being in there, but it really wasn't.
Yeah.
So it was, it was showing in the fund balance until those projects were completed.
How much was showing? I've been, I'm, I'm missing something here. Wait a minute.
What he means is, it's just, it's gonna show up in the balance.
I didn't read the comment.
Instead of property taxes.
That there was that you thought you had it, it wasn't in there?
I didn't say anything about ARPA.
What's, what was you saying? The, the, the COVID money?
I think that was Kyle's, that might have been mine.
No, Kyle said that.
Oh, Kyle said it, okay, sorry. So what am I missing here? How did it not, how can you think you had it when it was a one-time payment?
Or two-time?
We, we knew it was, it was one-time money, yeah. Uh, it came in two payments, um.
You should have known it was going off.
If it's almost all spent though, it shouldn't be in there anymore.
Right, correct.
It's, so it's not, it's not anymore.
Wouldn't be affected the current budget is what you're getting, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, or, or going forward.
And you knew that, correct?
I never saw the ARPA money, so it wasn't in my mind.
But you knew it wasn't gonna be in the budget the next time, correct? Am I incorrect in asking that?
Yeah.
And you're aware of it?
Yeah.
Are there any I agree with Tom. You've made some hard decisions. I gotta go to work. Thanks for acknowledging the numbers, Tom.
I, I, I'm done talking. Sorry, guys, for taking, but
Yeah.
But again, guys, stop lying your head, make the decisions, please. That's, as, as a taxpayer, we need you to start doing that. That, that's what you stood on my doorstep and said you would do. Carter, I fully expect you to day forward, make those hard decisions. I'm gonna hold you accountable.
Do that.
Kyle, I'm like, you, you know, you're all my supervisors. He just attached me in my district one. Everyone of you are accountable to me.
Nope.
No.
If I don't, if I don't work on that, make sure I don't come back. Really.
You got my word.
Are there any other public comments or any anyone who didn't get a chance to speak?
Well, but do you know when the budget hearing will be, like, the final thing?
We can't schedule that today because of the changes with the state law. So, um, we have tentative date for, is it April sixteenth? Um, is when we're planning. Um, but that can't be scheduled at this meeting.
We're hoping for the sixth day.
Well, yeah, if you don't, and they can't, if you can't make a decision yet, it hurts your publication, right? Because you're not published.
Yeah.
Still the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ten days.
Ten and twenty.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can take the money from the next week?
Well, before you guys sit down, I wanted you to start thinking where I'm supposed to get this money to keep paying all the time. That needs to be in your mind. I, I, you can't just keep coming to me. Might, no, thank you much. Might have to run a shift, be one year longer. I guarantee I'm running stuff one year longer. Okay, that's all I got.
Thanks, thank you, yeah.
Thank you all for coming in.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Well, I'm sorry if I took you guys
Roger, second. Josh and Roger.
We'll give it a round of applause.
That's right.
Um Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 What's the website where we can plug in our stuff to figure out?
Uh, yeah, just let it journal and I'll write that down for you, just on the
Just, just a second. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed. Motion carried unanimously, two oh five.
Did, did somebody make a motion second? I missed that.
Yeah, uh, Carter and Josh seconded.
Yeah.
You're not gonna make it under court.
Yeah.